Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Today is Wednesday, May 22, 2024. We are here for an afternoon work session with folks from our Human and Economic Health Service Area. My name is John Kofalis, Commissioner from District One. Joined by my colleagues, Commissioner Kristin Stevens from District Two, Commissioner Jody Shadak McNally from District Three, and we have our County Manager across the way. And I believe I -- do we need to queue this up with you, Loretta, or shall we just turn it over to Laura? Laura, you're on.
Thank you, Commissioner. I am Laura Walker. I serve as the Human and Economic Health Director for the county. And this is our normal quarterly work session with the board in order to provide updates to any of our special partnerships, programs, new events happening in our service area, and also make sure that we are fielding any questions from the board in regard to these services so that when you're out in the community, talking with your constituents, you can be well informed about the good work that I believe happens in this service area. So thank you for this opportunity. So our first agenda item today is an update. We presented the notion of this program to the board over a year ago, and it was around retail food safety training. And we wanted to just provide an update, give you some metrics about how the program has been working and what the impacts are, and what we see for the program moving forward. So this is really an update to an idea that's already been presented at one of these other meetings. So with me to help with this, if we can get the PowerPoint up on the screen, there we go. You can go ahead and move to the next slide. There we go. And so I wanted to highlight, there's been the work of a number of different people in several departments. I think it's one of the really nice things about having a service area coordinated effort here. We have three separate departments within this service area that are fully participating in this program for the benefit of workforce development, food establishments to stay solvent and to stay within compliance with requirements, and also to provide education. So really core missions of our Health Department, of our Economic and Workforce Development Department, and CSU Extension Office are really being met collectively through this program. So a couple of the folks that have been deeply involved and really the point staff people for this program weren't able to be with us today. So I just wanted to acknowledge, though, that Annalysia Vasquez from our Extension Office has really taken the lead on the training for the individuals out in the community that need this certification to either advance their career or keep their food establishment in compliance. Nicole Aguilar from our Public Health and Environment Department, with her focus on environmental health speciality, she wasn't able to be here today either, but I wanted to acknowledge her contributions. We do have one member of this three-person team that are really the point folks, Adam Crowe from our Economic and Workforce Development Department will be helping with the presentation today. So go ahead to the next one. So really, you know, the three, this is a three-pronged approach to have this program be of benefit to our community, and that is through this collaborative business outreach that comes from Adam and his team, the technical support from our friends at Public Health, and then shared expertise that, along with the training capabilities that Annalysia brings, both in English and in Spanish, to deliver this curriculum to folks who need it, really come together to have made this really successful. So I'm going to hand it over to Tom Gonzalez, our Public Health Director, to talk a little bit about how these requirements change the landscape for food establishments in our community.
Yes. Good afternoon, members of the board. Tom Gonzalez, Public Health Director. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about something that's near and dear to us is our Retail Food Safety Program. We have just over 2,000 retail licenses, retail food licenses in Larimer County. And that includes anything where you're preparing and selling and storing food. So a school cafeteria, a grocery store, a brick-and-mortar restaurant, a cafeteria within an institution, as well as a mobile unit. So those all would be considered a retail food establishment. We follow the rules and regulations set forth by the Colorado Board of Health. So it's a uniform program statewide where we are delegated by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to provide the inspection, outreach, and education services within the program. I'm very proud of our team really embracing equity and looking at how we can redistribute resources and power and make sure folks understand the regulations and the why. So the purpose of the program is to prevent foodborne illness. That's the ultimate goal here, is to not get people sick from food. And we work very closely with the industry as well as Economic Workforce Development Center and CSU Extension because that's everyone's goal. We all want to go out, have food, and feel safe. But recently, the Colorado Board of Health adopted the 2022 FDA Uniform Food Code. And that uniform code did have a requirement that you must have a certified food safety specialist on staff at all times. Prior to the 2022 food code, it's just you had to have one on staff. What data has shown us is having a certified food safety specialist onsite all the time as food is being prepared and sold, you see a drastic reduction in critical violations noted during inspections and just overall trends of foodborne illness reduces. So that's the reason why. We have about just under 1,400 retail food establishments that by the new regulation require that there's a certified food program person onsite. So about 1,359 to be exact. We do every now and then have establishments that face barriers to not only the cost, but the access to the training and so forth. And that's where my esteemed colleagues have really worked together to look at equity. How can we reduce How can we reduce those barriers and provide access? But there are times funding is a barrier, and we have worked collaboratively in those situations to assist, whether that's funding through a process we have or finding other funding sources for the retail food establishment. It's rare, but we do occasionally have that, and we want to meet them at least halfway on this requirement. Certainly, now, with the new requirement that you're going to have to have someone onsite, it certainly depends on operation hours and the size of the operation, to how many folks they're going to need to have certified. A big piece, too, is making sure on language access. So, we definitely are working always to provide the requirements, not only in English, but Spanish, Arabic, and other forms. So, we do have a process at the Health Department where we will meet them in whatever language, even including sign, if that is what we need to do. So, we want to make sure we support all of our businesses and not creating additional challenges that may be just language barriers. So, that's been part of the efforts with the team. But that's really the regulation requirements and update from the State Board of Health.
Okay. Well, this is my turn. So, I'm Adam Crowe with Larimer County Economic and Workforce Development. And I'm very proud to have been on this partnership, this three-department partnership. And I would add to something that Tom had said, and that it is the goal of these three departments to really reduce the risk of foodborne illness. The fourth partner that I would add to that is our business community. Our business community is also very interested in making sure that those foodborne illnesses are reduced significantly within our community, and they work hard to do that as well. So, through that, they have been great partners, and that's really what this slide has highlights. And if you all remember to back when we had the Level Up Program during the pandemic, and that was another great cross-departmental partnership, out of that, there was a Business Advisory Committee that grew up. And then, that Business Advisory Committee transitioned into the Northern Colorado Hospitality Sector Partnership, which is doing some pretty wonderful things. And they're well represented here, and they have been instrumental. And there's some key members, business members, that have been instrumental in helping us to spread the word, guide how some of this program comes to fruition, talk about some of the specifics on how the training and the certifications are offered. And then, you can see here some of how that's played out. Also, through this partnership, there was a grant opportunity that was offered through the State of Colorado, the Workforce Development Board, to be specific, that provided the opportunity to do some channels of training to help people who want to stay in the hospitality industry advance and work towards that living wage. So, knowing that this grant is in place and there'll be some training attached to it, it becomes a very good way to identify who those managers, those up-and-coming managers are within the industry, and make sure that they're connected with this training that's offered through the Extension Office. So, there's a lot of cross-pollination, and there's a lot of cross-supports that are happening with our business community here. So, next slide, please. As you can see, the efforts, as Tom has talked about them, and we talked about on the last slide, are really starting to bear fruit. And I wish that Annalysia Vasquez with the Extension Office—you can see a picture of her in both corners here—I wish she was here to talk about this, because this is—she's our fearless leader, and she has done much of the work to grow this program. And you can see when we were piloting it in 2022, we made a dent, for sure. 2023, an even more significant dent in what we're providing. And I'll go through some of those acronyms in just a minute. And then, in 2024, you can see that we're well on our way to even surpass what's happening in 2023. And that'll lead to something else I want to share with you in future state on the slide, but not quite yet. So, when we look at these acronyms, the CFPM is Certified Food Protection Manager, which is what we're really targeting, is those individuals that have a leadership position within the establishment that can really guide the work and make sure that the work and the preparation and the storage of the foods is safe and meets the standards. And then, we have the Food Safety Works, which is for our frontline workers. These are folks that are just getting into the industry. They might be the frontline staff that are doing the prep on the line. But they also need to know what those basics are so that as they're—because, you know, you can't have that manager watching over your shoulder all the time. So, the more people we have trained, the better. And that's a lower touch, a lower amount of time needed to get that certification. But if you could, go on to the next slide, please. Some of what Tom was talking about is really coming to fruition here. And then, when we think about what we have coming over the next year or so, we have restaurants that are up against a requirement that is where they're going to need to have more food protection managers on staff. And there are some concerns on their part, and when they get someone trained, they're going to be a hot commodity, and they're going to go work somewhere else. So, our goal is to train as many food—certified food protection managers as possible in our market in Northern Colorado. And so, if Annalysia was here, she'd be talking about this. However, she has made great connections with other training providers in Northern Colorado, so specifically Front Range Community College. We already talked about the Hospitality Sector Partnership. There is also training that's happening in Weld County. And so, her counterpart over there with Extension, she's been working with pretty closely, as well as Department of Health there. And then, what they're working towards is creating a menu that businesses can have on hand that offers them the different options for training up their staff, because there's some people that just need to get recertified, because it's lapsed, and they don't have to go through the full class. It's just a matter of taking the certification and getting through that process. We have other businesses that are going to need two or three new certified food protection managers, and therefore, someone's going to have to take that full class. So, making it available as much as possible—it could be onsite, it could be that these trainings are offered in groups or small groups. And then, Annalysia does do, from time to time, as time permits, some one-on-ones. Most of those are coaching or tutoring sessions. So, within that context, one of the bottlenecks that Tom had talked about is the language access, in that we are able to provide interpretation in most of the spoken languages in Northern Colorado during the training. However, the test isn't always offered in languages that match up. And so, Annalysia is becoming certified to proctor in multiple different types of tests to augment and increase the number of languages available. So, she's working hard at that and hopes to have that done by the end of June so that, again, we're offering another option for our community. And then, built within this, we can't underscore the environmental health inspectors that are out on the front lines, doing a lot of the work to also keep us safe and educate restaurants and support them. They're also making the referrals and highlighting this work. And so, when we think about all the different ways that we're going to be promoting this work, they're our frontline, and I want to make sure that they're recognized in all the work that they're offering there. And then, I think we're open for questions.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Tom. Colleagues, do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah. Thank you for the update, and this is great work. If someone doesn't pass that—so, it still looks like 80% plus people pass—can they retake that, like, right away? How does that work? Because, I mean, obviously, people need this, and maybe they just need to study up a little bit more.
It is my understanding that they can take it again pretty quick. There may be a delay if they don't pass the second one. I'm not sure, but that's sort of sticking in the back of my mind. But Annalysia works with folks pretty closely to help them pass.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner? Commissioner Shad—I'm getting there. Thank you very much. I'm glad you're waving.
Thank you for this. I'm really thrilled to hear this group stayed together, and especially through times of trial. And I know that was really some really strong relationships and trust built, so really thrilled and heartened to hear that. And I see—if we could go back a couple of slides—and maybe you mentioned this, and I didn't quite catch it. We know there's a lot of businesses that have come and gone, like restaurants and things. There's a lot of open spaces. But what I have seen exploded is the food trucks everywhere I go. And outside of breweries, there's food trucks, and out of—there's a food truck rally. And so, I'm wondering two things. Are some of those businesses now in food trucks that were, you know, had to move into those areas and are mobile? And/or are there businesses that are doing more—there's new ones doing that, and is that included in this partnership? Or maybe you already mentioned that? Because it seems that's the thing now, and it's great, because sometimes you could go to your favorite, you know, adult beverage establishment brewery and hang out, and there might be this rotating different group of food trucks. So, I'm just curious about that. Or do you have any data to show some of those have not had storefronts, but maybe have moved—they're still here, but they're in a different place?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner. Make sure I understand it. Are you asked—was your question, are there more mobile units than we've had in the past that are not connected to a brick-and-mortar storefront? The answer is yes. We have—since the pandemic, we have seen a fairly significant increase in the amount of licenses issued just to a mobile unit. The food code does require them to have a commissary—that is, of a commercial nature. So, they do partner with a brick-and-mortar, or they have their own brick-and-mortar where they do their dishwashing and store food and those things at a commercial setting. But to answer your question, yes, it's a fairly significant increase, not only in Larimer County statewide, when it comes to mobile food trucks.
And are they a part of this partnership?
As businesses, they're certainly part of the Hospitality Sector Partnership, yeah.
And my—other part of my question was, there's some businesses that—there's a lot of restaurants that have—at least, some ones that I have seen or known for a long time—that were trying to do something different through the pandemic, and I'm wondering if we have tracked that at all, if they—have they gone out into food trucks now and not into the storefronts? Does that make sense? Because I know a couple that have.
Yeah. That's a good question. We've seen some of that. How many and the percent? Yeah, I'd have to go back to the team and get that, but we can certainly get that.
So, that—my last question, Mr. Cherry. So, if you'd say they have to be connected to our commercial space for dishwashing and things like that, what does that look like? Can you tell me more about that? And is that something that is—they share common space or another restaurant shares? I'm not sure I knew that piece, and can you explain or tell me what that looks like?
Yes. So, the commissary is where it meets the licensing requirements. Typically, the major components are dishwashing, your three-compartment sink to wash, rinse, sanitize utensils throughout the day—through the day, proper storage, commercial storage, whether it's refrigerator or storage that's dry goods storage, but mainly to dump wastewater, those kind of things. What we have seen is a partnership, a collaboration with the industry. You'll have a licensed retail food establishment that also serves as a commissary for three, four, five mobile units. We've actually even seen some of our mobile trucks opening up a commissary, and then they partner up with five, 10, 15 others to share the cost for that commissary. So, we're seeing creativity in that arena, in that space. So, that's been encouraging. But that's what's helped the increment on these food trucks and the food mobile units is that commissary connection.
Thank you for sharing that, and that's really great to hear about the creativity and the collaboration. That's really neat. Thank you.
No, thanks, Commissioner. I don't have any questions, but I do wish to say thank you for your important and good work.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. So, the next item on our agenda—and I feel like we've given the Commissioner's Office some piecemeal parts of this, but just wanted to bring to your attention—and for—I know the hundreds of people probably going to watch this recording afterwards—that give you an update on which of our departments have current annual reports to share with the board and with the community. And I think the most important part of this is just to bring them into your awareness so that if, again, if you're out in the community, that if you need some copies of these reports, either in English or Spanish, that you know that they exist and the kinds of information that are in there so that they can be a helpful tool to you in these conversations out in the community. So, I'm actually going to have Adam start with taking a look at the 2023 Annual Report for Economic and Workforce Development, and just give you a couple of highlights. And you do have a hard copy in front of you as well, in English and in Spanish, of that report.
Great. Is it going to be on the screen? Okay. We're working on—if we can give it a moment.
And where might they find this? On the website?
Oh, yes. So, you can go directly to our homepage, larimerbackslashewd.org, and it's on our homepage if you scroll down about halfway. And a couple of things, as it's pulling up, that I would let you know about our annual report. We have—we do have it in multiple languages, English and Spanish. And if you were to visit the webpage to look at our—and look at the online version of the annual report, you would see that many of the—there are hyperlinks built throughout which lead directly to services that we offer or provide more information about partnerships that we're involved in. There's also a video that one of our—that highlights the work of one of our participants in a business that they're connected with. And through that, you can—you can see the interactions and the relationship that's been built. So, I encourage you to take a moment and look at our annual report in the virtual version. So, as you can see here, there's some statements. Commissioner Kafalas, our director, Mark Johnston. And then, the QR code down at the bottom, you can scan that, and it would take you directly to that online version if you wanted to view it on your cell phone. And it was important to us to highlight some of our priorities. Obviously, our diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility and justice work. We have put a lot of effort and hired some staff that are very skilled in this arena for all of the outreach that we're doing and all of the customers that we're serving. And you can see highlighted is one of our folks there. And this is a person that was struggling with English, was connected to Lupita Martinez, who's one of our outreach coordinators in our office, and helped her through the hiring process, and now she's working with UC Health. And then, down below there, you can see the video that I was referring to of the young person that's working with a local web developer slash marketing person. And that's a very interesting story as well, because this is a young person that was really starting to—coming out of the pandemic, was really starting to feel depressed and was starting to feel a little bit hopeless. And we've heard about that with our younger generations, because life just didn't seem like it was quite as possible as it was for previous participants, especially around work. And they have really been able to turn around that outlook through the partnership that they formed and that relationship they formed with the supervisor through their internship. And then, I would say that each of those boxes that you see at the top under the DEI portion, those are clickable, and do encourage you to take a look at those. There are many of the ways that we've either infused this work or new services, like our digital literacy. But if you could go to the next one, please. Thank you. We also serve businesses in the lower left-hand corner. Those are clickable boxes there. It will take you to more information. And we have highlighted here a local electrician company that works mostly on industrial sites. And this is a company that flies under the radar when we think about jobs and employers that people want to work with. And so, it's a real good opportunity for us to talk about the work that we're doing to raise awareness around occupations that are on a growth trajectory, as well as pay a living wage, with businesses that may not be on the forefront of people's minds. So, we've worked with this company quite a lot to raise awareness and bring people in that are—that we're currently working with that are interested in this occupation, and also helping them to fill up and get started with some apprentices. And then, obviously, the work that we do in workforce is a team effort. There's no one organization that can take the full load. So, you can see in the lower left-hand corner of this page—or sorry, lower right-hand corner of this page, the NOCO Regional Economic Development Initiative is something that I'm pretty heavily involved in, as well as the rest of the folks in our economic development team. And it spans 30-plus different communities in Northern Colorado so that we can look at things regionally, a full labor shed. I think you all have been briefed on that. And then, NOCO Works is a labor initiative and a talent initiative, which brings together—well, there's about 20 different organizations—from higher ed and nonprofit to K-12 workforce that are all working together and helping to push forward our talent initiatives. And then, obviously, our sector partnerships are highlighted down below. We already talked about hospitality, but there's four others as well. And on the next page, you can see—oh, if we could go back just one more. Thank you. I wasn't super clear. You can see the impact that our work is having, specifically on the workforce side. So, for every dollar that comes into our organization that's supporting workforce and is—and is a staff-related, customer-staff-related connection, there are $7.5 that are going out in increased wages. So, folks are seeing definite increases in wages, and you can see that in that middle chart. That bottom one with the 26K with the upward arrow, that's for our more intensive case management. These are eligible services—or eligibility-required services, but this could include internships, it could include training, it could— training, it could include a lot of things. But we see folks that are coming into our system, as they're exiting our system, their, their wages have increased by about $26,000 on average. And that's wage before, wage after. You can see how our budget breaks out on the, the next part of that page. And then if we were to go to the next one, what you can see here is just a breakdown of our numbers. And because I didn't talk about them earlier, I do want to highlight a couple of our larger numbers on here. One of them is with our, our veterans team. So I think you all are well aware that the Larimer County Veterans Team is up in our office and is under our department. And 2,800 folks and families that they have served, veterans and families. And this is during a time when there were some federal legislation changes to open up the roles for our veterans. So Agent Orange was opened up a little bit more, and then the burn sites, folks that were affected by that. So their, their phone was ringing off the hook. In fact, there probably wasn't enough room in that box for the number of phone calls they've taken. And then the other one is our Larimer County Conservation Corps. So 30,000 hours that are worked. And these are, you know, conservation corps. It's a long history. We have kept that history alive in Larimer County. They're doing some great work to reduce costs on heating and water within people's homes, but they're also out in the field making it comfortable and accessible for people to get out on the trails, as well as doing fire mitigation in our forests. So I'll leave it there unless you all have questions.
Thank you again, Adam. Colleagues, questions or comments? Commissioner Shadak McNally?
Thank you. Adam, thanks for all this information. I really think this is a well-presented and put-together document. So thank you for that. And again, all of your great work. It just really tells the story well. I did hear about the, on NPR the other day, about the veterans and all the different, all the new opportunities to serve veterans and all the cases. So I'm glad to hear we're able to maybe receive all those calls. And is there a need at this point to, so I have two questions. There a need to expand any of that or support that more? Does that money come from the state? And do we need to think of anything the county needs to do to support that? Because I, I think that, that once that word gets out more, there might be more interest or calls?
And I wish I knew more about the budget and, and the service needs in our Veterans Office. However, we could get back to you with some of the answers to those questions, if you'd like.
Reason I'm just asking, I had a veteran friend call me today and, and inform me they've been diagnosed with stage four cancer. So I just, a young man, so I just, just thinking about that. So, and then the Conservation Corps, they're doing a lot of great work. And they get grants to do, to do some of these fire mitigation projects and things. And so that's really dependent on the grants and what you get and where you can go. Is that correct?
It is correct, yeah. And they, they mostly work on public lands. And all of, they are completely grant funded.
Great. And, but they don't, do they do anything on private, or is it all public lands?
From time to time, they will do some work on private lands, or they'll cross private lands to get to work sites. And they've worked really closely with natural resources and others within the county to get those, those accesses.
Right. Excellent. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, thank you for the great work, Adam. I appreciate it. My question is around the, the folks that you serve. It sounds like you served over 10,000 individuals with Economic Workforce Development Services. Are you seeing mostly young people? Are you seeing people that need to upskill? What kind of, what are the demographics of the folks that you're seeing?
Yeah, that's a great question. We're seeing demographics across the board. So we do see a lot of younger folks, and we have a team that's dedicated to serving those people. We have also a fairly large population of folks over the age of 50. And it's either a layoff, or it's a, you know, an encore career, or things along those lines. It's not uncommon, even in our internship program, to work with people into their 60s and 70s.
Well, and I imagine with, with, are you still finding that a lot of people are still like struggling to find people to do work? And I assume if that, if so, that likely that they're okay to hire people at any stage of their career. Is that right?
Yeah, there is. Businesses are starting to find more talent, which is nice. And part of that is, is that Northern Colorado, Larimer County specifically, has a relatively high labor force participation rate, higher than the, the national average. And especially within our prime working years, which would be that 25 to 55, we're, we're well over 80%. And so that has helped for sure. But there are still people that are in what might be called our gig economy or working seasonally. So they're out of what we might call our traditional workforce. Within that context, I think that there, we still are seeing some challenges with underrepresented folks finding employment that, that would meet their financial needs, as well as businesses that are struggling to fill some positions. But it, it has eased considerably.
Thank you. Well, great work. Really glad to have these numbers. Appreciate all the, the help that you're doing. And we talked yesterday really about helping people, you know, have that economic opportunity to move up and grow wealth in their families. And so I appreciate the work you're doing in that space. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I have two questions. One is regarding the annual report and the Spanish version. How do you do that?
Well, we, we do it through translation. So we do have a translator that we work with.
In-house or?
We do have in-house translators. For this document, I'm not sure if we had an in-house person or if we contracted with someone, but we do both.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then my second, thank you, my second question, perhaps a bit more substantive, although how we do translations matters. And that is, and maybe you answered this, but I wasn't hearing. Folks need to talk into their mics. And that is, how are, given that one of our demographics is changing dramatically, older adults, how are we serving older adults who choose to continue working or who need to be, continue working?
Yeah. So there's a number of ways. We, a lot of these folks are enrolled in what's called our Career Transition Team, which is a, are with them. And it's a more case-management intensive program. And through that, oftentimes, there's upskilling or changing of skills. A lot of it, especially with our older adults, they come with great skills, great work experience. So it's a matter of how can we apply those skills to a new or different occupation? And so a lot of transfer. We also, as a department, have lots of business connections that an individual just couldn't have. And so how can we use our network of businesses to make connections for people that they wouldn't be, be able to do on their own? And oftentimes, that puts someone on a trajectory that they, they wouldn't have been able to find, just because it's, you know, there's dozens of people doing it in our work, you know?
Are we able to provide support services? For example, perhaps older adults might have some limitations on mobility. They don't have access to a car, that sort of thing.
Yeah. Yeah, we do. And if you were to look at our budget page, you can see that built within that client services is a fairly large percentage. That does include supportive services. And that can include transportation assistance. It can include accommodations on the job. We do have some folks that work from home, so it could be accommodations within their own home, if they have a home office.
Yes. Thank you. And I always ask this question, so I guess I'll ask it again. And how are we doing serving people with disabilities to help them find good jobs?
So always a challenge. That's a community that has a very high unemployment rate and a, and a low labor force participation rate as well. We do have a disability program navigator. And Disabled Resource Services is a, is a key partner for us. It's a local nonprofit, as well as the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. So it's very common for us to work in conjunction with those partners. Because again, these are our team-based activities when we think about supporting folks who have disabilities.
Thank you, Adam.
You bet.
Thanks for the good work.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just a, one more follow-up, too. We, we will give the board an update. I know we brought the Disability Navigator upon her hiring to be introduced to the board, but really, her work hadn't started fully yet. And so we do have a plan to give an update when there are things to tell and stories to share about the work that she's been doing in the community. We will be sure to do that, maybe even at our next quarterly meeting. I'm making a note.
That's great. And I think I saved the slide presentation when we had the, the presentation a couple of months ago, whenever it was, on the Disability Navigator program. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome. Now I'd like to turn it over to Tom Gonzalez, our Public Health Director, to give you a snapshot of the 2023 Annual Report from his department.
Thank you, Laura, and appreciate the opportunity to provide a snapshot overview of the work done in 2023. We did have the opportunity last week at the Joint Board of Health and Board of County Commissioner meeting to provide our 2024 priorities and some of the public health in action. Some of that work in 2024 obviously builds on 2023. So we'll go to, our first page is a letter from me. And really, this letter was about Public Health 3.0 becoming, moving into health strategists, really working around equity and the social determinants of health and how they intersect. We talked a lot about that last week with the Board of Health, looking at how transportation, mental health, food insecurity, access, where you live, as well as education, all play a major role in one's health and certainly the lifespan of the health. So really, that's talking about that, how we're becoming more data-driven, how we're looking at being more focused where we see inequities and disparities, and really looking at health equity on how we can redistribute resources and power to make sure everyone has that opportunity for a healthy life. You'll see our fantastic leadership team at Health Department, our Larimer County Board of Health, which is, the Health Department, for those watching, it's a little unique. The Board of Health governs the Larimer County Department of Health and Environment. I report to the Board of Health. I work for the pleasure of the Board of Health. But we absolutely work very closely with our Board of County Commissioners, as you see on the page, as well as our, as you're hearing, with our, our county departments and staff as well. At a glance, what I like to say here is you see what we're, the snapshot of what we're doing. And we are called the Invisible Shield for public health and for our community. Meaning, you see right there, 779 communicable disease investigations. So that can be a case of E. coli, could be salmonella, a pertussis, brucella, quote-unquote, chicken pox, whether that's in a childcare setting, whether it's a foodborne illness, whether that's vaccine-preventable diseases. We've got a team of disease investigators always investigating whether a case, a cluster, to prevent an outbreak. So that's that invisible shield, making sure we don't have outbreaks within our community. You'll see also, we have nutritionists and dieticians working behind the scenes with our families. It's our WIC program. Nearly 4,000 participants are getting nutrition education, as well as WIC funding vouchers to, to purchase nutritious food, whether it's one of our 26 grocery stores or our two farmers markets. We also have nurses out in the, in the community working with eligible families. So it's called our Nurse Family Partnership Program. They make home visits. It's just a data-driven program that really, really changes and produces some great outcomes. Our, our retail food inspections, as you heard, our staff out. And I say they're, they're environmental health specialists. They're not out just inspecting. They're educating. They're working with the industry, coming up with solution ideas. So we prevent foodborne illness. Working on rabies, rabies always is of issue. Last year was actually a low year for rabies. We only had 13 bats, where previous years we had skunks, raccoons, mountain lion, bats, and so, et cetera, with rabies. So our big education there is, please don't play with wildlife, because they may have rabies. We're inspecting our public pools to make sure they're safe to recreate in. You'll see, we also issue birth and death certificates. We're involved in onsite wastewater systems or septic systems. Here's some data I like to share, that we have 15,000 operating systems, septic system, mostly in our rural, unincorporated area. That translates to about 5 million gallons a day of wastewater being treated through a septic system. So that's one of our roles. We're in childcare and schools, making sure we're preventing disease transmission there. We also review any new or remodel on a food establishment. We're involved in clinical aspects where there's gap filling. One of them is our travel clinic. So those folks maybe go into parts of the world where you maybe need a yellow fever vaccine or malaria treatment stuff. So we had 275 individuals come visit us that were going to other parts of our beautiful planet, and we were making sure they were safe. Our sexually transmitted infection program, our reproductive health program, and, and then our families served by HCP, we'll talk more about that. And all these, our vaccine-preventable, such as flu shots. Some of our, our big four act, action, public help and action last year was a big one, our Health, Well-Being, and Resilience Data Dashboard. A big, big thank you to the Board of County Commissioners and Laurel Walker, the team. There were multiple folks involved in releasing what I think is a top-notch data dashboard. And it's growing and building every day as we get more feedback from the community. But it helps drive our decisions, as well as drive policy decisions. And hopefully, we're always looking at a health and all policy lens. We received our prestigious award from the National Association of County, City, County and City Health Officials regarding our work with investing in our employees and combating employee burnout since the pandemic. And that's been really, really effective in retaining happy staff. TAC 212, a monster collaborative effort with the city of Fort Collins, the Board of County Commissioners, the Family Outreach Center, us and others, and Pooter School District to get that open. And boy, we're seeing lots of youth there and activities for the youth, and it's all youth-led. So that's helping with connecting and making folks feel connected to the community and not isolated. A big part of our program is air quality, being in the non-attainment program, uh, non-attainment area. Another big thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for additional funding that helped purchase an infrared camera that we use on inspections and education events, as well as getting strategically placed two new regulatory ozone monitors. You all hopefully received your invite to the ribbon-cutting event, June 28th, at Beth Key Elementary School in Timneth. It's exciting. We're going to have our first ground-level ozone and nitrogen dioxide monitor east, on east of the county and east of the interstate for us. So that'll be exciting as well. Our, our financials and our expenditures, revenue and expenditures. And then lastly, is just really our programs and services. I, I really highlight our strategic planning, Health Equity and Partnership Office. That's really was born about two years ago, but that's where our population data professionals reside, where our equity, our community outreach, our Community Health Improvement Plan, everything that's part of the Public Health 3.0. But we are really moving the organization to where health and all policies, the social determinants of health are always the centerpiece of, of what we're doing as our mission. So, and you see all the other programs we provide there as well. I've talked about them, except the very bottom one, our Emergency Preparedness and Response Program. We lead Emergency Services Function 8, that is, public health and hospitals and behavioral health. So we work with over 60 partners to make sure we're prepared and ready to respond to any all-hazard event, whether it's another fire or flood, heaven forbid, or another pandemic, or a mass casualty issue. So just a lot of partners we work with there to make sure we're prepared daily. With that, I'll open up for any questions.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Any questions, colleagues, comments, feedback? Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you, Tom. Really exciting news. I wanted to ask about the TAC space. Commissioner Stevens and I toured the Loveland campus that we helped them purchase with the Boys and Girls Club. And up on the second floor, they mentioned there's a space that, when I toured, when it, before they started tearing things down, had like a little interesting back kitchen space and sink. And then they said, oh, well, that's going to be the new Loveland kind of third space, kind of another teen activity center. Is that some, and I know that they have been asking us about that, asking you about that. Is that something that you were all involved with, too? Or is that a separate, is that through United Way? Or do you know anything about that third space or that, another teen activity center there that they're looking to put in on that campus?
Commissioner, thank you for that question. And, and I got to tour that as well. And what an exciting asset for the community. We want, we, TAC, I'll back up, TAC 212 was really a pilot, and really a successful pilot. And the goal is to get one of those in every community. And Loveland, that's, that's a start. We definitely want to get one in Estes Park. If we can get one in Timneth and Wellington, Berthet, et cetera. So we, it's part of the Community Health Improvement Plan and a part of creating safe spaces. So yes, that's all part of that. And it's just been wonderful. So yes, that's all part of that, and it's just been wonderful to have United Way and the county, and, and others as a big partner on that. But that's all part of that work on creating more third spaces, safe spaces, and connecting people so they have that sense of belonging, and they're not lonely. It was really exciting when I was doing the tour there, to meet a parent that had a child that utilizes the younger part of Boys and Girls Club, and then the new part of it, where their older child, and having them both kind of co-located, and how that helped out with juggling being a parent and, and access. So I think that's going to be a great asset. But yes, that's all part of that Community Health Improvement Plan, objective one.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that information.
Commissioner Stevens, do you have anything?
Yeah, just one question. On one of the things you refer to, HCP and its children that have special healthcare needs, can you just tell me a little bit about what that program is? I'm not familiar.
Commissioner, thank you for that question. This, this is a maternal-child health block grant that comes from federal money, that comes down, really, we have a social worker, as well as a program coordinator with high skills, that works with parents right from the NICU. So it's a partnership with UC Health and Banner as well, where if there's a child identified with special needs, whether that's cognitive or physical, we immediately work with those families to help them navigate the complex ecosystem of getting those needs, and we make sure they get the proper needs. So the development of that child is number one. And that is a, a program that we've been, gosh, we've been doing that since the late 70s, early 80s, and it's a very, very beneficial program.
Yeah, it sounds great. Thank you. I was not aware of that program, so I'm glad to know that that exists. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't have, don't have questions at, at this moment. Just gratitude for the work. Thank you, Tom, and your team. Anything else, colleagues, before we turn it back to Laura? Turn it back over to Laura? Laura, are there more things you'd like to present?
So, we do have two other annual reports, but I, the directors of those departments, we currently have a vacancy, as you know, for our Behavioral Health Services Department, but they did produce a 2023 annual report, also in English and Spanish, that has been provided to the board. So certainly, if you have questions or concerns about anything in there, please reach out to me for those. And we also had a review last, the last one of these quarterly sessions, of really a lot of the activities that were happening in CSU Extension and their annual report. I will make sure that hard copies of that are available at your office as well. So we're not going to take the time today due to time constraints, but wanted to make you aware that those were available for you as well. I'm going to ask Lexi to come up and join us for our last agenda item. So this is Lexi Valenti, recently joined our staff, and she's going to give us an update on the housing programs that the county is operating. And thank you again to the Board of County Commissioners for approval to begin expanding our support of affordable housing in this community through launching the Landlord Engagement Program that Lexi was hired to head up. But I'll have her introduce herself and talk about the other position that is also in progress to be filled.
My name is Lexi Valenti. I'm a Housing Program Coordinator. Thanks for having me, Commissioners. So I was hired to lead the Landlord Engagement Program. We are, we hired a second person, they're going to be a program specialist. So where my role is going to be more community-facing, working with housing providers. The specialist is going to be handling more of the technical support, and then service provider support and relationship building as well. Since I started, we've started, I've started meeting with a couple of housing providers here in Fort Collins. I've met a few in Loveland. I've also been familiarizing myself with key partners, such as Housing Catalyst and Family Housing Network. So that's kind of where we're at.
I think I'll go first, really quick. I'm just curious, how do you, how do you determine, how do you prioritize reaching out to housing providers, landlords? What criteria do you use to prioritize that process? I mean, do you just go in the phone book and say, oh, this is an apartment down here in Loveland, I'm going to go talk to the landlord? I mean...
Great question.
Thank you.
I, currently, what I'm doing is attending events, so going to Rental Housing Association events, where property managers and landlords are. It's a little bit harder to find the private landlords, so I've been getting a little bit more creative there. A lot of that is word of mouth, so building trust with the landlords that I already know is going to be huge for, you know, getting to know those others that I don't know yet.
And just a quick comment. Thank you, colleagues. And I just, I want to say, I appreciate that you are working closely with the Landlord Engagement Program of Housing Catalyst. I, you know, we talked about that at the last, at the last Housing Catalyst Board meeting, so that's a good thing. Colleagues, I jumped ahead. Sorry about that. Commissioner Stevens, anything quick, or?
Just thank you for the work, and yeah, let us know if there's any contacts you need help making, but appreciate that you're getting started on that. And this is a really big piece of trying to get people housed and keep people housed. So thank you.
Commissioner Shadak McNally?
I just want to say, welcome. Thank you for your engagement and, and your work, and I look forward to seeing how this progresses, and just wanted to say warm welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, it'll be, it'll be good and interesting once you've gotten your feet on the ground and you have something to report out in a couple of months or whatever, how things are going. So welcome as well. Laura, is there anything else?
Just to say, the preview for probably our next meeting, we will have that disability coordination update, we will have another housing update, and we will also have an update on the acute care facility activity at Longview, because we will have much richer data points to share with the board and the community about the activities and the successes that we've been having there. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Laura. And normally, I would ask for the wisdom of our county manager, but I'm going to suggest that we adjourn at 2:28 PM, so we could have just a couple of minutes to stretch. Thank you all very much. Thank you to our economic and workforce development folks, and certainly our health and environment folks. Have a good day.